To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Right on the consent agenda is minutes from September 19th, 2024. Anybody read those? Anybody have any comments or motion?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, going on. I have a public hearing. This is case file number... I'm not here. We'll go into miscellaneous.
Jeff Fisher.
Do you do the... Tell us about the new amendment to the ordinance.
Why can't we come back to that? No, we can't? Like, suspend the rules, skip around, come back to that?
Well, I think we can, but...
She went charging to find him.
I'm gonna wait on her because she's being judgmental, Elizabeth.
All right.
Okay, now we're gonna go to our public hearing part of the meeting today. This is case file number 2024-11Z. And we are to consider the request of the City of Odessa's applicant to amend Chapter 4, Business Regulations, Article 4-2, alcoholic beverages of the City Code Ordinance, is to update the city's approval process and enforcement procedures for alcoholic beverage licenses to enhance public safety. Yes, sir.
How's everybody doing today?
Doing well, thank you.
The Chair and planning zone commission. We had... So this item today is a culmination of a lot of staff research and time and also public input. So we... Development Services had looked into new standards for enforcement of our alcohol license process in the city. And the biggest thing really is the enforcement arm. So a lot of the original drafts that had some planning and design standards, we think that's probably better kept in the zones ordinance. You know, as we continue to update that document later on in general, but that bars and restaurants that sell alcohol and things of that nature are really best suited for, it's really the alcohol beverage sections, such as our redundancy code. Fortunately, it was last updated in 1983, so 41 years ago. And so here we are in 2024. At that time, it probably served its purpose, but a lot of things were missing. We're gonna go over just kind of what's changed. So think of this more as an update to the alcohol beverage section of the city code and not a brand-new ordinance. So we're gonna go through the sections right now. And we simplified this a lot. So as I mentioned, the first one was 1983. So TABC has made a lot of changes since then. So that's the main thing, is we want to be consistent with whatever TABC is doing. But we also want to make sure that our police department, OPD, has the opportunity through this process as well to prosecute and things of that nature. So it's really creating a process where we have better coordination and better standards between OPD, City of Odessa, and TABC working together. And they came out to the town hall meeting as well when we engaged some of the public and we heard everyone's feedback and things like that. So we had Chief Gurke there. We also had a representative from... Sergeant from TABC. So we think that we're moving in the right direction here. Okay, so before, TABC issues a license for two years, two-year periods, and they can self-report. They don't have to come in and... They don't need to get those renewals. So they get their TABC license and then they don't have to come back here and get necessarily the city secretary to sign. And that's one of the problems. So the other problem was that we were issuing our city licenses every one year. They were doing theirs every two. So there's a discrepancy. It worked the other way, too. If TABC issued their license and then for two years, and then in one year, we came back in and said, "Well, hey, we need to get ours." There was really no obligation for them to come back and get ours. And it wasn't really being enforced. And then fourth is just the penalties. So there really wasn't any... Unless, again, there was a complaint filed or somebody had called the police, obviously that would be a mechanism, of course, for them to go in. But otherwise, some of these, you know, including the minor infractions up until that period of license renewal, you know, things were being checked regularly. So again, nobody was doing anything wrong. It was just... We're just trying to update this to fit what's out there today. So those were the main issues. It's just basically strengthened enforcement. So the new process now, we've said, instead of requiring a license every year from the city to sell alcohol... And by the way, let me just clarify. So this is for on-premise. So your bars and your restaurants and off-premise. So places that sell alcohol. You buy beer and wine at a liquor store and then you drive home and then drink it there. It's off-premise. So this is for any alcoholics since that the city issues. Okay? So now we're saying it's every two years, consistent with TABC, which we think makes more sense. Same with the fee, too. So state statute allows us to charge a processing fee. And the processing fee is already set. So we can charge up to that amount, and we already are. So the good news is this process is not... Rather than creating it through a different jurisdiction, like the zoning ordinance, calling it a site plan, we're not charging it under $500. We're just charging whatever the normal fees would be, which is obviously much, much better. So those licensing fees are already set by the city in our schedule. So for example, right now, we're charging every year. So they're set for you can't go over a maximum every two years. So if you're just selling beer, you're paying $75 a year right now to get a city license, because you can do up to 150 every two years. So now what we're saying is just come in every two years. Don't come in every year. And then in two years, pay the 150 one time, instead of 75 and 75. So the good news is the fees are not increasing. Okay? Now, in terms of the process, right now, planning... So billing and collection takes the application, and they give them... The applicants a checklist, just a one-page. And the checklist, planning looks at it and says, "Yep, you're in the right zoning district. You're in, say, you're in downtown, so you can sell alcohol there and open up your bar." And then billing inspections is checking the setbacks from churches and schools, which I'll get to in a minute. The problem there is it's really a zoning thing when you're talking about setbacks. So building really is responsible for reviewing, is there any building permits needed? So if they're a new bar, for example, do they need a permit? That's something that you should check. So the only thing that we changed in this process is we added OPD as part of the review team. And then planning now will just look at what planning does. So we will take over the setback review and zoning, site plan. And so we'll get to that in a minute. The only difference really is we're... OPD's reviewing and we're adding a couple of things for planning, for the on-premise locations. And again, what we're adding, we'll show you in a minute, is consistent with what TABC would ask for when they get an application. So we're now requiring a site plan, but this is just a sketch, a drawing. So nothing fancy, as long as it's drawn with, you know, 1 inch equals 4 feet or whatever, they just show that on the drawing. Why is that important? Because state law and our city code requires that if you're a bar, for example, you're at least 300 feet back from a school or a church. They also put in a provision to make that from a private school if you're only selling alcohol. So once you sell food and you're a restaurant, they don't have to... Private schools don't have to be 300 feet from a restaurant, but they do from a bar. We added that into the code to bring it up to 2024. So because, you know, there's a lot of private education nowadays as well. And so those kids also want to be safe. So that was the only change there. But they just submit a site plan. Planning Department will check the setbacks. They don't have to do that. We're just showing you how it works. We didn't change how it was measured from the previous ordinance. So if you're a bar, you basically measure from the front door in a straight line down to the front property line. And then you draw another line that goes directly to where the school property is. For a church, it's a little less strict. It's just from door to door. Okay? And then the last use... Oh, I guess we didn't... We meant to include that one, too. Anyway, so the other use is the adult entertainment businesses, which we're probably not gonna get a lot of, but they are out there. And so that is a... Police already require a separate permit for those. That's a 1,500-foot setback. That one is measured from property line to property line. So instead of where it says bar there, imagine that was the adult entertainment. That one's the strictest. So basically, if the school is immediately next door, the setback is automatically zero, because you just count the shared property line as your setback. So it goes in order of the... That would be the most strict. And then the schools are second, and then the churches are third. But generally speaking, it's 300 feet. If a bar or a restaurant or a place that sells alcohol is already there and then the school comes in, that's on them. They are grandfathered in, so they would not have to comply with anything. And finally, we didn't make any changes to the opportunity for variance. So if the bar is 299 feet away from the school and the school gives a letter of support, that's something that they could then take to city council and ask for a variance. And something like that would probably pass. So there is an option for them if they run into that. The second extra drawing that we're asking for now is the floor plan. This is required by TABC anyway when they get a TABC permit. We just wanted to make sure that they submitted that with our application as well, so that planning could check that for them, so that when they got their city license, there's not gonna be a hassle now and they have to go get their TABC. So they have to show the alcohol serviceable area. So if they're a bar, for example, bathrooms are not selling alcohol. The kitchen and the area behind the bar where the bartender is is not selling alcohol. It's only the area where people can sit down and be served. So they need to have that square footage for TABC. If they go to expand that area, they need a brand-new application. However, if the ownership doesn't change and they're not expanding the area, they don't need to keep getting a TABC permit every time. They just have to do their self-reporting check to make sure. However, the city wants to... The reason we're asking for ours every two years is because we want to be able to have enforcement. We want to be able to have a staff member from billing and collections or planning or OPD to check these things on a regular basis. Why? Because there was a recent news article, I don't have it in front of me, where somebody was overserved. There's a couple other situations, too, in the past. We're really there to enforce those guys, not everyone else. The 99% of, as we mentioned in the town hall, those bar owners and restaurant owners that are doing great, great, let's keep it going. This is just a quick expedited process. You know, show us a sketch of your floor plan, show us a sketch of your site plan. If you're off-premise, or excuse me, if you're... If you don't have a physical location, I think all of the licenses would. So you're gonna have like some sort of physical building. But I guess if you're like a packager, distributor, and you're out of town, I'm not sure how that works, then you wouldn't need this. Also, I was saying, so these are good for two years. So when you come in two years, if the owner is still the same, the bar name is still the same, and they're not increasing that alcohol serviceable area at all, like you're not changing anything, they don't need to resubmit the same plans and redraw it again. They don't. They just need to show their... Fill out their application and pay the fee. So that's it. Okay. So we get to a decision. What happens if they don't have all the paperwork? What happens if there was a felony? What happens if something... So again, that 1%, what do we do? So billing and collection would issue the decision matter. They would circulate. So OPD would flag it in their review process, which isn't... Again, OPD's doing a great job, but they're not part of that process now. We want to make sure they were. So now they'd have a chance to say, "Oh, okay. We've done a criminal background check on them, and we found out there was three incidents last year. So now they can recommend denial based on that." They can still appeal the applicant to the city manager within 10 days. So if they want to appeal something and question it, maybe it was a conviction that's now elapsed and, you know, he didn't get the paperwork yet. Or maybe planning was asking for something and now they know they can resolve it in a short time. Those would give the city manager the discretion. If they're not comfortable with it, or, you know, just say they want to defer it, they can defer it to city council, which is really, I think, what council probably would want anyway. So the difference is, other cities, including in West Texas, require all of this to go through something called a specific use permit, an S U P. We didn't want to do that because of the same reasons that we were questioned before. It's a $500 fee. It takes two and a half months. This takes less than two weeks. So that's why we wanted to keep it. By putting it under the enforcement section and not the zoning ordinance, we'll save the customers at least two months. We'll waive that $500 fee. They only have to pay the same licensing fee they're paying now, and there's no increase in the fee. So again, that's why we think this is better. The only thing we kept in there for OPD, and only OPD can make that decision, because they already do it now, is if there's a past history of a really bad bar owner or a really bad restaurant owner, that just constantly repeated violations, murders, you know, felonies, things like that, then they can install security cameras or they can have police patrols or anything under, we just said, accepted requirements. Crime prevention through environmental design. That's where they can put in more lighting. Or that's where they could put in a security camera to protect people walking back to their cars. But we believe that the best authority to make those decisions is the police department, because the police department handles the crime. You know, we're the bureaucrats that look at the plans and everything. Also very important, but not to that level of importance. So we think that that's probably the most appropriate thing to do. Okay. Can we go on and do inspections now? Yes. This just kind of really calls out what we already probably should be doing. But if there's a red flag and somebody reports a police incident, this gives basically any staff member the right to go out. So if it's a complaint, "Hey, you know what? Your bar, there was a break-in or something last week. What's going on?" Failure to allow someone in to do an inspection. Maybe there was a court order that just came out. So maybe we issued the license and they met all the requirements. And then six days later, they find out that the owners committed a felony. Well, obviously, they have to shut it down. That would just allow one of our inspectors or OPD or the city official to go out and do that. And finally, the one thing that we wanted to say that will change if this gets approved is, right now, if they get their city license and they meet all of our conditions and we approve it, our city secretary will sign the TABC portion to get their application. At that point, we give them a physical copy of the city license. Do we know for sure, though, that they're gonna then go to TABC and get their TABC permit as well? There's no way we would be able to know that. So what we're doing now is we'll issue a conditional approval. If you... For a new application, right? Because renewals, they don't. But for a new one, where they need a TABC license or it expired and they need a new one, they're gonna have to show us proof of that now before billing and collections gives them that physical copy. Because what we don't want is they get a physical copy of the city license to sell beer. It's like, "Hey, great." And then they put it on their window, but there's no accompanying the TABC license. So TABC was good with that. OPD appears good with that, and so are we. So again, it's just creating a synergy between the three departments and/or the three agencies and working that are together. So... And then finally, enforcement. It's all in your ordinance. I could talk about every section. I don't want to do that. I just want to keep it simple. But we have the suspension power up to 60 days, which is generally consistent. I think TABC, most of their things are up to 60 days as well. And also the power to revoke the license now. So before, that was not spelled out in the older version of the city code in 1981. It just wasn't there. It just said that we have power to convict or go to a court, but it never really called it, "Well, who does it? When does it happen? How often does it happen?" This will do that now. So basically, in the zoning or in the copy that ordinance that you all had in your memo, it basically just says that everything that's consistent with the Texas Penal Code and everything consistent with the TABC code. Why? Who does the Texas Penal Code? OPD. Who does the TABC Code? GVC. We met the sergeant for this area. He was very, very helpful. He came to the town hall. Couldn't make it that night. He still came in virtually and gave us a lot of the TABC background. Here's one of the other challenges, too. Just like us, there's always staffing issues. And they go out and do a physical inspection every three to five years. That's a long time for things to be done in between. They do, as I mentioned, with their AIM system. The customer, the bar owner, has to report, I believe it's every year, every two years, through their electronic system and self-report, which we know 99% of the people are gonna tell the truth, right? But what if they don't? Or they say, "Oh, here's a photograph. Look, we did put the sign in the window that we could sell alcohol on the next day." Again, is that gonna happen? Probably never, but we just don't know for sure. So this just makes it better to say, "All right, we'll give you our portion of the license, but prove to us that you don't have any TABC violations. Prove to us that you don't have any OPD." And the best part is, they just come in, and now with our new system, my government online NGO, we want to make this a process through our NGO software, so that they can do this electronically from home. They don't have to come in and take a checklist like they do now, run it down to billing department to check, run it down to planning to check on a piece of paper. Now they can just go in on their computer from home and do this process very quickly. I cannot guarantee it's gonna be done, you know, like the very next day, but I'm fairly confident this... If they have all their paperwork, this should not take more than two weeks. It might even take three days. It's hard to say, depending on how much staff planning has available, if it's the day before Christmas. But we're confident we can get this done quickly and not have to tie up. I've worked in the other cities where I've been a planner. It's a lot of extra work for staff, too, to have to keep writing those memos every time and going to council. And it's also harder for council, because it puts pressure on y'all and it puts pressure on council while it's kind of wishy-washy, right? If we don't have a standard set of criteria, do we approve this bar? Do we not approve this bar? And then there's a camera running and you guys are on the spot. So let staff handle. We'll do it. If we have a problem, though, like I said, we think the appeal, first step, just to the city manager, just because that, again, it can be done quickly. And if he's still not good with it, because there's just, again, like one of those bars where there's like, you know, five criminal acts in the last year, then that's the ones we go to council. And we handle that publicly. That way, the applicant has a right also to defend their position, and then we make that decision. Hopefully, we won't get too many of those. We may never get any of those for many, many years. But now, hopefully, we don't have to write this code for another 41 years. Or if we do, it'll just be some minor deviations. I think that's it. That's the process there, just visually. To submit their new application, again, it can hopefully be online through NGO. To billing and collection, billing and collection will circulate it. Those are the big five right now, the five departments. So OPD will just be added to that. Planning will have the... Again, for the new ones that are on-premise, we'll need to see a site plan and a floor plan. Again, those can just be hand-drawn. They don't have to hire someone and pay out thousands of dollars. They can just draw something on a map, basically. Billing and collections will check as well. Billing inspections, if there's any permits. And then again, the city secretary will sign. And I think this will be better for her, too, because then her department will be able to make sure that they get their TABC... If they needed a TABC permit, they get that paperwork first before she has to sign. And just to clarify what they do, they just make sure that... I think the whole city is, but they just make sure that they're in a quote-unquote "wet" area, meaning they can sell alcohol. Since we have a lot of counties in Texas that are still dry. So that provision in there, just make sure that that's been taken care of. And then when we get to number six, that's where... So normally, billing and collections is already doing a great job of this, but now it'll be done electronically for NGO. So let's say 30 days before the two-year period is up, there's an email that gets sent to the customer or a letter. NGO's great. It can auto-generate those or billing and collections or us. Someone can send that letter out. And then they know, "Oh, I've gotta renew my license." Great. So they'll come back and renew the license. If they need the accompanying TABC license, then again, they can do that. So hopefully, this will make things better. And again, keeping out all that extra stuff that we talked about initially. We got it, and we understand that that's probably... I think it... I think a lot of it overlaps with what OPD does already. And I think that was, for me, the biggest factor of, let's avoid duplication and extra work for the public, and let's try to make this go better. So if y'all have any questions for us, we're happy to answer them.
Ideally, we're moving from having to renew every year to two years. The renewal is gonna be tied to the issuance of the TABC license or the renewal of that license, so that they're happening almost simultaneously.
That's correct, yes. And if they don't need a TABC license, say they're still active, then that's okay, too. But at least this way, it's consistent.
And it's the timing is based upon when they initially apply for the license. It's not like something that every January, or every 2nd January. So it's tied to when they get the initial license?
That's correct, yes.
What about if you get a temporary license? Like, for instance, if I want to have an event and I just want to go get a temporary license, how does that affect that?
So it'd be the same process. I believe we issued those here as well. So if something required... Basically, anything that requires a TABC license would still come here. Now, the difference is, we would have to... You're right, that's a great question. We would have to expedite that because of the time constraints.
I've never came here for a temporary license. I've always went to the TABC.
Yeah, we get our TABC.
You've never come here in the past. You always go directly to the TABC, and you never come here in the past.
Let me check... Okay, so...
Would it be up to the venue? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Maybe would it be up to the venue? Like, if you have a wedding and you're gonna have... Serve alcohol and they have like a section or like a site plan already where they serve? If they... If you have the event, like they already have it set up? Would it be up to them?
Well, it depends on...
That was the issue, that everyone was supposed to come, at least, because that way we know what's going on. And if PB needs to be more present whenever there's like events, because usually the temporary ones are for events that are going out in the community. So we know what's going on in our community. We know to actually have more security in that area and all that kind of stuff. They were supposed to come in. There is something that we're probably gonna have to turn it around within that day, make it available online, and they'll be like reviewing differently.
Well, TABC would tell you how you're on the security. So we would hire them.
TABC doesn't tell us that, that's why...
Well, they tell you. They tell the event person that you need to have.
Yeah, like you need four security.
We don't get into that, but it's for our... Because they're reviewing and they have PB for your event there. But your event doesn't stay just in one area. Your event can be like when you're closing down the streets. You know, they're not monitoring that whole traffic and potential accidents that are gonna be happening during that... Around that.
Yeah, but if we closed down the street, you're gonna know about it.
Yeah, because we're working with the police department.
So and that's what it is. It's not to create the more work. It's just that it was always supposed to be here. But as you could tell, nobody was coming and getting their applications and putting in the applications through us as well.
So just to clarify, even if you're getting just a temporary license, you would have to start at the city now, step one?
I guess, because I mean, yeah. Because we never knew that, because, yeah. I mean, I coordinate things with the city manager. He would never tell that we're supposed to do that.
And that's our goal, is to work with TABC in order, like... Our goal after this is to try and see if there's a program that we can work with them in where you're only applying once, and then it just routes from within them to us.
So not necessarily apply here and then...
We're not there right now.
So, so where was that ordinance before? Because are, this was already on the list?
Yeah, it's, uh, article, city code of ordinance is Article four-two. And actually, it's interesting, is, it's, it's also a line item in there too, but billiard halls, dance halls, adult entertainment, about four different ones.
So this, this does not mean like at a dance hall? This has been like at a nursery or something like that? Where we had, like, at a special event at a home or something like that? So this, that, so that exempt from those kind of things then?
So I think, I, we can, we can double-check, but I think.
So that's probably why it was exempt? It would have been at a home or a private residence, or it could have been like at a, so that's why it was exempt?
No, he's talking about different, different ordinances. The dance hall and all that, those were completely, they're completely different than this. This is all under the TABC, the license, the alcohol license.
Okay, so, so that's where this?
This, yes, because it's all licensed. Any type of license, remember, there used to be forty-something license, and then they went down to something? Those all apply to this.
Okay. Okay, so normally, I would kind of look at those or know where those were, so I, because I would, I don't remember ever seeing anything like that before.
And that's why we're just trying to clean it up, make it easier, make it, make everybody aware of what it's supposed to be.
That's, and it's, so that's a big question. So if any, any, um, TABC license that's required to sell alcohol in the state would also need the accompanying city license?
Because I've bought many, I mean, I've probably bought several. You too, Brad, right?
Do, do we? We quit just because we would, it, it's easier just to hire the jack shack or somebody who's licensed to do it, and then you release all the liability. I mean, and, you know, our event is the Coliseum, so we have to do that, but.
I had a question. Internally, how will, oh, there, the five departments that you listed, how is that going to be communicated, like, through one system or, um, yeah?
Yeah, so what's great about, because we've been building the modules with NGO for a lot of the other departments, but what's, what's great is, um, yes, correct. So every department would have access to NGO, including, there's a customer side to the portal as well. So the customer would log in, get a username and password, and they would upload and bring in their, their drawings. And then it would go in and notify the city. City would create, um, so they would click on that application type for an alcoholic license. And then it would automatically go, it automatically auto-generates. So then a copy would go to OPD, and then OPD would write in their comments. So if there was, like, you know, let's say everything was good, then they would just check the box, and it would date stamp it as well. So that's good too for tracking, so we know we're staying efficient as well.
But they can still come in in person if they're not, like, computer savvy?
Yes, that's right. And we want to, I think we want to keep that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have questions?
Yes, I got out my red pen. No, I, I just went through, so one of the things that, um, I was curious about, so the off-premise, so everything in here applies to off-premise too, so.
Correct.
Standard sales and Glazier, they're going to have to draw you maps of where all their stuff is and, and that kind of stuff?
They're already being worked on.
Okay, so that doesn't change. I, I kind of agree with you. So the old language was very broad, and, you know, something I've learned doing all this is that you, you legal guys love definitions and writing it all down.
I was just like, me too.
So there's probably an opportunity in here to kind of list some of this stuff out, that was, was that. But, you know, kind of, kind of to the other point, I don't know why, why does it go through five departments? That seems kind of complicated.
So that, yeah, and the thing is, it, it already does go through, um, four of them. It's just, the, the problem right now is the, the, the chain of, the chain that it goes through, it's easy for things to get missed. So having a physical piece of paper, walking around and getting certain things, secondly, is that it doesn't cover everything. So, um, by walking around, for planning, yes, they'll know what zoning district you sit in, that's good. And they'll know that they're three hundred feet from a church or a school, that's also good. But then, we don't have any way in between from the time it starts to the next renewal period. There was nothing in there that said, okay, we can, we can check to see if there's a violation. Another thing too, is if, for some reason, six months in, TABC, um, the license expires, then basically, if TABC gets revoked, ours should be able to be revoked. And so there was no really way for us to check that. One of the things that's not spelled out here, but that is an option internally, is that we can have staff, say, weekly or maybe monthly, just go in and check the list of them. I mean, there's, say, there's a hundred or a hundred and thirty, that's not really a lot. They're all staggered out over the two years, so they're not all going to come in at the same time. So there may only be, let's say, one or two a week that we're actually physically checking. But then we could see if something about expired. And there, you can access that off of their website. It doesn't tell you always the reasons why, but at least it tells you if it is, and then we can always make a phone call if something comes up.
So to your question of why we're just adding PB, which they should have been there from the beginning, why we kept it with billiard and collection is because people are accustomed to going there. We didn't want to interrupt that from them.
Yeah, but that falls into the, let's keep doing it, because that's the way we've always done it?
And this is something that you can recommend, to move it to the case, what we call the case holder can be somebody else. If you guys recommend, you know what? Billiard and collection should it, but what happens is our technology right now doesn't work like, it's, we have the pool, let's say it moves to plating and zoning, and we're the case holders. And somebody brings in, um, money. We don't have a cashier, so we have to walk them downstairs to billiard and collection, then walk them back up here to our floor in order to do that. And we didn't want to do that to people. Can we amend it later and remove them once we have a better system? Absolutely. Or we can do it right now and just deal with them until we fix our, uh, being able to receive cash in our departments.
Okay, I don't want to be complicated. So what, private events? So like, let me just give you an example. So right now, we're in political season. So we have private events where, you know, people have to get a temporary, you know, license to have, to sell or to provide alcohol to people. And you have to have it for, um, so you're protected. You know, um, you have policies and stuff too, for insurance policies too. So they're going to have to get a license for this. You know, a temporary license to, because you're hosting it, having alcohol that you're giving out. And, and for instance, but we have events too, where we have these Christmas tour homes, where we have these bubbly events, where we're going to find alcohol beverages. We have to get a temporary license for that too, so. And they're hosted at different homes or different properties. So am I going to have to get four different licenses for four different homes on that? Or am I going to have to do that every year? So I'm just kind of giving you an example of things that you're going to be, just going to be, you know.
Going to run into.
Complicated.
So, th- those are the things about ordinances, is that things can, like, that is, you have a great valid point, right?
So you're, so this is making things very complicated for.
And so now it gives us the opportunity to go into it and see, okay, what is, can there be an exception, right? For these things. And this is why we love having these, um, conversations, because this is where we have the opportunity to see, we're not the ones going out there and getting the license typically, right? Um, and so this gives us the opportunity to know, hey, yeah, you have a, a.
We have art society that does certain things, where they have things there in museums, and then I'm, I'm, we're not talking about everyday Joe that just has to, has a bar, but he has different things like that.
Right, so now it gives us the opportunity, because we still have, you know, time to research, we not, might be able to come and present to you guys.
Yeah, bubbly buses, they have a bus that we have sometimes where you have, where you have confined places where it's not, where you just do this once a year, host it. But you have political events now, where you have people that are having fundraisers at the homes that, and you're, you don't do it for once a year, where it's, it's good for two years. This is something that's done for one day, that expires in one day, this is what we.
And our goal was to follow what TABC is doing and, and make sure that we're covering all their licenses to be, but there's good, like, you just brought a great point, you know? It's like, oh, maybe we might consider who might be an exception, and that would be something that we add into here, so.
Exactly, so you see what I'm talking about, so.
So it's something that we'll definitely look in and try to have an answer for the next.
Yeah, so you throw some exceptions to this, this rule that's every two years is changing, so.
Yeah, and I know a lot of cities do do that. I don't actually, it, again, and I'm glad you brought it up, so we'll check into it. But what I, what I can say is, if, if, if TABC has a type of permit.
They do, they have a temporary one-day permit.
Okay, so then those ones, worst case, we would just expedite them. Now, if those don't, some of these things that don't require, uh, TABC fees, unless there's already a process in place to charge, again, I, I would say we're pretty confident saying we wouldn't then add a fee if TABC also didn't have a fee.
There is a, it is a fee, they, they did.
Yeah, you pay TABC.
Yeah, you pay, they have a one-day fee, and you pay them, it's a one-day fee.
Or, sorry, what I was saying was, TABC may charge a fee, but they only allow the city to collect, um, certain fees. And so that's the good news. If there's something that TABC charges for, but that they say that a city can't charge for, then we wouldn't charge. Okay.
All right, so I was on.
Can we just have PB, uh, he had a point about the, your daily events, so why for them? It's important to.
He's probably worked them on, yeah, he's probably knows.
All right, well, I'm, Matt Davidson, I'm the deputy chief of the Odessa Police Department. I don't think it's so much the events that you're talking about that we'd be interested in. It's any pop-up event that could occur that could promote criminal activity. Like, say they rent, uh, an event centered for a, a music fest or whatever, and we'd want to know who's throwing that, and what their credentials are, and what type of population is going to show up. That's the things that, that's why we're involved in this. Same thing, we're not really an approval entity, this is in a police state. But if we have a wealth of information of a bar that's promoting criminal activity, maybe their hands aren't in it, but they're turning a blind eye to it, that's something we could provide, kind of on the civil side, that would give the city reason to, maybe they shouldn't have a bar.
Right, because we partner with you guys whenever we do something like that.
Yes, absolutely. So I think that's our only involvement, is so we can say, you know, yes, we have information that this could be a very big deal that would cause a huge amount of police presence if this events allowed them. Not to stop you from having, like, the normal events that go on, so.
The tour events.
Right, I just didn't want to put us in a bind, that we, for something that, you know, hinders us from doing our events.
No, our research side will be smooth. Either we know who you are or we don't. If we don't, that's probably a good thing.
And besides, besides the problem that if we now exclude that section, then, you know, it's that one case, you know, that might.
Right, we just, right, I didn't want to get us in a bind where it hinders us for the daily permits or anybody else that's in this type of situation, that we, you know, put us in a, you know, in a category where we can't get approval, so.
Well, there's just been several things that have had some unintended consequences that.
That's what I didn't want to happen, so.
That, yeah, you, you go to pass your thing, and, and that's great, and then those come along, it's like, oh, we didn't mean to do that, but now the Junior League can't, or the O'Bore can't, or, you know, whoever hosts it. We didn't mean to do that.
But for most of these things, we're talking fifteen minutes of research, and then we've passed it on.
Exactly, yeah.
And then it goes to a single person that has access to all the databases.
Yeah, so we can just fix those and make sure that we're not, have the daily passes. Yeah, and normally, it's a one-day event or a two-day event that normally happens at evening and at day.
And I can guarantee you that at first, there's going to be so many events that are going to happen and we're not going to know about it, because it takes a while for people to know what they need to do and all that kind of stuff. But eventually, we'll get there. And I've had it in other cities where, um, I've had to do a review quickly, and their event was that day. And we got it done, because we now have the technology that we can do stuff like that.
And so I also, you know, if you could figure out how to not filter it through five different departments, that would probably help.
Billard and collection is in the process because they have the ability to actually collect money?
Uh, for billiards, correct. Because we don't collect, um, any money. And to your question about the five departments, it goes out immediately to everybody. It's not like it goes, this person has to prove, and this per, it, it's all done. So everybody can review, reviewing at the same time. So we can have ten people in there. It's just done quickly, as quick as they can do it.
Well, I commend your effort for, you know, for doing all this, where things kind of really.
I disagree that five department needs to look at this stuff.
Well, I mean, I, I, I see that, you know, sometimes, you know.
Well, in the previous.
If you, you know, back to what did you say about the wet? So city secretary has to prove that it's a wet area?
A wet signature.
Correct.
A wet signature.
That, that the state says you can sell alcohol in, in this county.
I was going to say, wet signature is something completely different, all the filters and lawyers up here.
Do we have any dry areas in the city?
I was going to say, do we have any dry areas?
I don't think.
Yeah, I don't believe we do.
So why, why bother?
Because there, there's always that chance that a county could do a refer, I believe they'd have to do like a referendum, and then the, the citizens would then be able to vote on it. So what's happened is, Odessa, Ector County, and a lot of counties now have had previous discussions where they, they've had votes, and then once those, once they say, yes, we want it to be a wet county, or these areas only can be a wet county, either one, then it's just so that the state can cross their, again, a lot of this is really crossing teeths, dotting i's, so.
I think, kind of, Jimmy, your point, my point. If, if Ector County's wet, and there's no dry areas in the county, then why waste Norma's time checking a box that this is in a wet area?
Because the, the state won't issue their, the accompanying TABC license.
Okay, so that's the.
Well, and if, um, let's say one department, if it didn't have to go through five, if it just went through one department, would that department have to hire people to do the other tasks?
Yes.
I think that was brought up in a previous meeting, as that, you know, if one, if, if it was all planning and zoning, then they would have to hire people just to do those jobs, right?
Before we get the software, we wouldn't be able to do their, um, background checks on people. You don't have authority to.
Right.
Well, I do background checks on my staff once a month.
But not criminal, I don't know.
I run.
They don't have our information.
Well, I have everything that's listed here, felony and misdemeanor, other than Class C.
But we have.
But you're not looking for that. I mean, that's prescribed in here, you're not.
Well, that's what all has been required in the past. And what we're saying is, like, I might not could arrest you for being a gang member, but I know you're involved in criminal activity. I don't know what the specifics of it. But what we're saying is, we get information that we turn in into intelligence that we can act on, like, it could be legal for you to own a gun unless you're a gang member, and I can attach you as a gang member with that gun down by a felony charge. So my information is different than just a criminal background check. A criminal background check is just something you've been arrested for.
So then, I mean, I, I had no problem with OPD doing the background checks. I understand what, what y'all are trying to gather. I just didn't, I don't know why I asked, go to billiard and collection, and planning, and inspections, and the city secretary. It just seems like there could be a way to streamline that, but.
Well, inspections might need to go out there and look, or just like this, but, I thought they're just like a handsome, like.
Well, I, I think that's stupid. So, you know, you got people justifying their existence. But, you know, if what you're doing is more than a criminal background check, then what this ordinance needs to say is what you're doing. Because this says you're doing a criminal background check. So.
Maybe saying criminal background to something.
To your discretion, maybe?
Further into the ordinance, um, it'll call out, when you get, so when you get to the application being circulated, that's where it'll call out all the things that OPD reviews for that background check.
Again, I have no problem with OPD doing what you need to do. That's the whole point of this, is, is finding that information. It's the side part that we got into that I thought was silly. And, and again, parsing this out, I understand, Jeff, you know, our conversation, you know, some of this stuff is already being done, but that, that's been kind of my rally cry, how do we make this stuff better? You know? But, all right, moving on. Some of the other things in here, just kind of housekeeping, some of the language doesn't point to the right places. You and I talked about that. Like four dash two dash ten, the, the, uh.
Hours for sale?
Not in there. But where it says the one oh five dot oh three dash C, or C in parentheses, that is not right. It's B. And the wording in that language, three hundred thousand doesn't exist. It's eight hundred thousand or five hundred thousand. So, does that apply to us?
Yeah, it should, it should say eight hundred thousand.
Well, my copy says three hundred thousand, what y'all sent me.
Okay, so we can, as needed, we can correct that as well. What, what we did is we, after talking to, um, uh, everyone else and all the parties, including the town hall, we did have to make some minor tweaks and ask what those are, including the ones you mentioned and O P D mentioned to us. So, um, let us know if there's something that's not on the PowerPoint. I know we've got other applicants here to deal with other issues, but just to show you really quickly, so what we, from the time the memo was posted to now, these are just the minor tweaks. So we took out the, they don't have to submit at least thirty days before. It just puts them in a bind, so, but that's on them. So we didn't want to make them do that, so just prior to expiration of the two years, you have to come back in. But again, they just need to know if they're, and we would remind them, we would have an auto reminder set up so that we would tell them thirty days before, so we don't need that. Uh, and then that's just, again, if, if the T A B C license is already there, they don't need a renewal from T A B C, but they still need ours, so that's part of the same, if required. That one there is just saying if there's outdoor patios, so to measure those at distance from if they're selling alcohol outside. That could, the outside could be three hundred feet from the church, so just to clarify. Uh, and then this was the provision we added in for O P D. So the T A B C has a public safety penalty chart, which is, some of those things might be some felonies and misdemeanors, but it's basically a list of anything that's a violation or breach of public health and safety. So anything from selling alcohol to a minor, over serving up to murder. And so we're just, we just wanted to get more cross referencing to call that out so that it was clear that O P D, in addition to criminal convictions of major felonies, they also have the authority to deal with those minor things as well. So that's, we, we added that in there just to cover that. Uh, then everything you had said, we've cross referenced and renumbered things.
And there were several in that last thing, the four dash two dash fourteen. The, uh.
So that's the four dash twelve instead of.
Yeah, the twelve, and then the, yeah, you got those other two. The A one E doesn't, that's not right. It goes to the wrong place. Okay.
So what we can do is the, sorry, I didn't have that one up on the screen, but I think it's eight hundred thousand as well. Whatever's in the current city code, we can make that in the motion and we'll make sure when we take it to council, we'll, we'll have that corrected as well.
Or would we be implicated, you know, with that recent lawsuit that we were talking about with the, you know, the city be, um, liable at all for? Would the city be liable at all for, since that, um.
The bar that over served and is being sued?
Could we be? You know, how could that, you know, I feel so sorry for that, that family, but how, you know, how could you be so sure? You know, when you're a golf course, I've seen people, you know, bringing in alcohol at golf courses and having, you know, stored in their pockets and stuff like that.
If you're asking as far as the city liability, if they over serve alcohol under this power.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a possibility the city could be liable.
Like that too.
We may or may not be, city may or may not be.
Be liable and things like that, it's so hard to.
There's always a possibility. Do I have to say it one hundred percent certain? But there's always a possibility.
You know, just so hard to, at a golf course like that to tell, because people can put stuff in their own bags and stuff like that, just always hard to tell.
Yeah, but the liability, there's a potential reliability for the city.
I was just wondering on that, something like that.
Craig, did you have any other comments?
I know.
You can, Craig.
Thank you. I think, I think this is good. I mean, you, you pulled the old one up and it's, you, you looked through here and again, what, what I do working for the state, it's like, oh, everything's written down. You, you lawyers like that, but, uh.
I'm like a lot of them.
There were just some opportunities in here to, to clean some of that up.
And we like public hearings, and this is a public hearing.
So that concludes our, our presentation. I just wanted to say to the record, we want to thank all of you for your help and time reviewing things and getting back to us, Police Department as well, and T A B C, and also to the public that showed up at the town hall and the people that couldn't make it, and they had posted comments or submitted those to us electronically. So we just wanted to say thank you and hopefully, um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone in the audience this afternoon that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public part of the hearing, turn to the commission, see if there are other comments or discussion, questions of staff.
A moment, sorry. If you recommend approval of this, you would just want to say in the motion into the record, you're recommending approval with the changes discussed, including the, the directing the numbers of the population, et cetera.
That would include the exceptions for temporary private events.
That's up to you all. Um, if we, when we, you know, or you could even direct us to more research. We, we, we will find that out, and if it's determined that it is a requirement of T A B C, I mean, that's up to you all if you want to weigh this out. The concern is if T A B C, through our research, says that they need a permit for a temporary event and they need a city signature, then we, we may have to require it. But what we could do is internally, um, we could, once we set up our electronic system, is make sure those like, so Ms. Crutts' point, those are expedited quickly if, if we have to leave them.
You, you do have, yeah, you do have to, yeah. Well, you actually do have to have a, a permit for a temporary. You, you have to have a permit from T A B C.
I think so too, so.
You, I, I know you do. You have, I get, I've had one before.
But even, even the old stuff covers that, because it says, "Any person engaged in any activity pursuant to which the T A B C requires a permit shall obtain the city permit." So, you know, like Liz said, you're, we've always had to, we just, we just never did.
All right, so is there any need to make an exception for temporary? Do we move on as presented by staff with the deviations that have been discussed?
I make a motion of the effect.
Is your second a motion?
My second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? Okay. All right, now, miscellaneous. Number three, case filed number twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven P. Motion approving the staff's recommended condition, the replat of Paradigm Edition. Second filing being the replat of lots one through six, block one, Paradigm Edition, located in section ten, block forty-one, T two S, T N P Railway Company Survey, in Odessa, but including Ector and Midland Counties. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the applicant and owner of Raxton L P, with attorney Mr. Dodson, as well as with consultant L C A, are speaking to replat six lots to introduce a ten-foot drainage adjustment to the south of the property. This replat request has received no denials from the department, and therefore, we change that recommends approval of the replat Paradigm Edition, second filing, subject to conditions A and B.
Any questions, staff?
These drainage prob, not particularly on this, on this plat, but these drainage problems for the city and, and especially for Ridgewood and all of those guys south. Has there been any long range planning on what, how they're going to divert that water that's flooding all these people off the golf course over there? Has there been anything long range, any plans for that? Are we just going to keep flooding those people every time we get a rain?
Go ahead and give this question over to your mom, the engineer.
Well, I'm, I'm engineering, I'm talking. The Ridgewood area is in a flood. It's, it's, it's a plat, the water, the lowest point in the city, so the water goes there, you cannot stop it.
Well, I know, but there, there not any large drainage culverts that are, that feed it on out somewhere. We, we never have planted that, or, doesn't look like we've had. It's what?
It is in the county. It's not in the city. So inside city, we're planning those drainage spaces, but in that area. And right now, if I'm not mistaken, they are planning something, but I don't know exactly.
It used to not drink, it used to not flood like that until we started moving all that stuff around. It didn't flood that way.
Yeah, yeah, it's got, we've got a problem because it's city and two counties, and nobody seems to want to take. I mean, it's going to be expensive, whatever we do, but we, we can't keep flooding those people over there and just act like it's Midland's problem, or it, Midca, County Midland, or it's Ector County's problem, or it's the city of Odessa problem. It's a combination of three. And we got to get that figured out, because we can't keep approving this development stuff and keep sending more water that direction. It's, I don't get it.
One of the problems in that area, there is no, there wasn't any regulation how to build houses, how, how high to build it. So we have inside city, so they can build the way how they want, doesn't work that way, so they build to look.
It almost seems like we need to get a, some sort of drainage system along Bankhead Highway and take it on to the east there. I don't, I'm not engineer, but we just.
So are they not required a certain elevation because it is in the county?
In the county.
And it's not necessarily a flood zone? What you're saying is like a drainage? It is a flood zone? But they're not required to build to a certain elevation?
If I'm not mistaken, no. I mean, Ector County stopped it from requiring now, but Midland County, it is in the, Midland County. Visually, it looks like there is no requirement, so they build to look.
I mean, it flooded all those houses this last night.
Yeah, maybe it is.
And it is a big, I mean, unfortunately, I don't have a map to show how big is that flood area, so it floods.
Yeah.
It's like a, it, fire is a basin, so they build houses in the basin.
But there are no major culverts there to take that water on to the east like the, like up there in the rest of the city. And, and because it's in Midland County, I think there's been three entities that kind of just ignored that, because nobody wants to spend the money. I get it.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to keep a long cast on their, and because we're not really discussing, um, you know, culverts and things of that nature, we're discussing.
I, I understand, but this, this issue that, that has come up time and again. And, and I know there's not, there's, there's not anything that you can do, but there needs to be something that, powers that be.
But very quickly, to answer your question, the power blocks will not eliminate the flood problem. Even though you take that water quicker into that fire, the fire will flood that area, no matter.
Okay.
Can we request a study? Because there's something we can do to do something, where we can work with the county to try to figure out to do something?
Midland County or Ector County?
Your mom, I don't think that applies to this fire in this area. Okay.
Thank you.
No, it is not related to this plat, that's what she said. But, well, at the same time, to answer to your question, what we are requesting as part of this plat.
Yeah, it's a drainage issue.
Right, thank you. Right now, this is not a public hearing, so I'm looking to the commission to see if there's any further discussion or questions of staff. And if not, entertain a motion.
Move for approval of this plat.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Going on to case filed number twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash seventy-one P. This involves staff's recommended conditions for a proposed preliminary plat of UConn Ridge, second filing being one hundred nineteen point five seven acre tract located in section two, block forty-two, T two S, T P Railway Company Survey in the city of Odessa, Ector County. Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the applicant and owner of Rico Energy and Investments LLC, with attorney Captain Lee, vice president, as well as with consultant L C A, are speaking to plat degree six hundred and two watts for residential development. This request has been routed to respective departments and have received no internal projections, and therefore, staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat of UConn Ridge, second filing, subject to conditions A and B. Right now, open for any questions, staff.
Any questions, staff?
I guess I have one. For example, one of the conditions is to provide water sewer, sewer paving and drainage plans. So maybe we need to start seeing those plans before we approve these. If, if the drainage problems persist, I know it doesn't pertain to this, but. Like, before we see them, do we have an answer to condition C before this is approved?
I'm going to defer to my manager and it looks like it's up to work.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, actually, this one is, is presented as a preliminary plat.
Oh, only preliminary?
Yes, and currently, I will let you know that they're undergoing a zoning. They have to send their documentation to go through zoning process as well. But they will have to submit their water sewer line.
Before we look at it again? Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, staff?
Is there any movement to complete dawn through there? Because doesn't that run through the side of that?
I move to approve case file number twenty twenty-four dash seventy-one dash P.
I second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're down to case filed number twenty twenty-four dash seventy-two P. Uh, this involves staff's recommended conditions for the replat of Davis Commercial Sites, fourth filing being replat of Davis Commercial Sites, Davis Commercial Sites, third filing, and Davis Commercial Sites, third filing, and a zero point three three acre, uh, part of an alley abandonment in section thirty-five, block forty-two, T two S, T N P Railway Company Survey. Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the applicant and owner of Champion Truck and Trucker, with attorney Mr. Kaver Barcena, president, with consultant L C A, are seeking to replat a combined pre-lot into one lot for commercial purposes. This replat request has been routed to respective departments and have received no objections, and therefore, the plan, staff recommends approval of the replat Davis Commercial Sites, fourth filing, subject to the conditions A and B. Right now, open for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? entertain a motion, discussion?
Move for approval.
Sir, second?
I second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign going on. Case filed number twenty twenty-four dash seventy-three P. Staff's recommended conditions for replat of the east thirty feet and the west fifty-eight point two feet, track five less the south forty feet and the west twenty-eight point two feet of track five less the south forty feet, uh, Munt Malone subdivision. Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, the applicant and owner of Hedia, uh, Ben and Rano, with the sole and SW How, Incorporated, are seeking three plat two lots into one lot for ownership purposes. We have received, uh, no, uh, projections. The staff, uh, recommends approval of the replat of east thirty feet of the west fifty-eight point two feet, track five, less the south forty feet and the west, uh, twenty-eight point two feet of track five less the south forty feet, Malone subdivision, subject to condition A through C. Open any questions?
Any questions? Any questions, any discussion or motion?
I move to approve case file number twenty twenty-four dash seventy-three dash P.
Sir, second? Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then case filed number twenty twenty-four dash seventy-four P. This property is in the E T J. This involves staff's recommended condition for replat of a one acre tract out of lot seven, block ten, Acotillo Park, second filing. Property is located southwest of the intersection of West Eleventh and North Clenden Avenue. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. Um, the applicant and owner of Armio Castro Jr., with the sole and SW How Incorporated, are seeking to replat a portion of the existing lot eight, block ten of Acotillo Park, second filing, to create one new lot for ownership purposes. We have received, uh, no rejection. Staff recommends approval of the replat of first, uh, of one acre tract out of lot seven, block ten, Acotillo Park, second filing, subject to condition A through C. Open any questions?
Any questions? Any discussion or motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody in favor of adjourning? All right.